Good afternoon. The town of Hinton respectfully acknowledges that it is located on the First People's traditional lands. We recognize this traditional territory to show respect and understanding to those who walk this land since time immemorial. Today, we uphold our ongoing responsibility to work together in the spirit of the intent of the treaties with all of the First Peoples and nations that call this place home. The town expresses gratitude for the opportunity to build a better community on these sacred lands for generations to come. And with that, I will call the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting to order at four P M. On June twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. We'll begin with the adoption of the agenda. Administration, do we have any additions or changes to the agenda?
Nothing from administration.
Thank you, council. Seeing nothing from committee, committee, we are looking for a motion to adopt. Mister Mayor, I'll move to the agenda as presented, Mister Chair. Thank you very much. Council, any discussion? Seeing none, then we will call that question. All those in favor, please vote electronically now. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. And we have, let's see here, citizens with counsel next. Uh, this is our chance for any of our citizens who wish to uh take a minute with counsel. It's not an opportunity for back and forth questioning, but if you have something you'd like to share briefly with counsel, we'd be happy to hear it. Uh, if you would like to, you know, please just let us know your name so that we can acknowledge you correctly in a minute. Is there anybody who's like to speak with us today? Jen, do we have anybody electronically today?
Uh, no.
Okay, seeing none, we will move on to our delegations and presentations. And today we have our DMO update presented by Natalie Charlton from the Hinton District Chamber of Commerce and Erin Reed, the DMO Project Director. Welcome.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon, Mayor and Council, and giving us the opportunity to give you this last one update. As Councilwoman, my name is Natalie Charlton, and the Executive Director of Hinton Chamber of Commerce, and the is Erin Reed. Our new DMO project director. So, uh, we're gonna. So in our table of contents, we're going to be addressing many factors, kind of right off the bat. Um, kind of make some clarification on some of this. DMO being the Destination Management Organization, DMF being the Destination Management Fund. The DMA was the Destination Management Administrator, and the DMP, which would be the Destination Management Plan. So we're going to be touching on all of those throughout our presentation. Um, not to spend a lot of time on table of contents. Um, how did we get here? Well. We've had many passionate groups over the years that have tried to put their best foot forward and try to let uh the Destination Marketing Organization off the ground. It has been no easy task. Um, and it's, there's still a lot of work to do. But throughout the years, there's been many groups that have come forward, and it's got us to where we are now. Um, with the success of receiving the Tourism Relief Fund Grant, which is the Prairies Can Get Grant, um, along with the support from the town of Hinton, we were able to move forward with the strategy of developing the DMO. We've also received funds from the town of Hinton to continue the work started by the DMA position that was in two thousand and twenty-three. This position was modified to become the DMO Project Director, um, supporting the development of the Destination Management Organization. The chamber was also successful in leveraging the funds that were provided by the town of Hinton to apply for the Northern Regional Economic Development Grant, the N-R-A grant. So we were able to leverage the funds committed from two thousand and twenty-three of the seven thousand dollars to continue to work into two thousand and twenty-four. That was a big win for us. About tea consultancy, um, or DMO Project Director. Erin Reed, who has an extensive background in tourism sales and marketing and has worked with some large operators um in the region. Um, Erin sat on the Strategic Marketing Council for Tourism Jasper, has strong relationships with neighboring DMOS, and a strong relationship with Travel Alberta. Erin started as the Hinton DMO Project Director on June ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, and has immediately started to engage with hoteliers, tourism operators, and local stakeholders. So she has let, um. There's, there's been no lost time upon the time she started. So, um. I think most importantly, um, to, to, to point out is that Transitional Solutions, um, has completed their research and they're due to deliver the, the final report to us. Um, we were hoping to be able to present that today as part of our delegation. Um, they are going to take the report right up to the deadline, which is June thirtieth. But to let council know, we will be receiving the final report, um, once we've done all the final reporting on the grant funds. Approximately ten hotels to date have been interested in being involved in the DMF and the DMO. And I know Councilor Taylor's going to ask for some others to support some different ones with me today. Fair enough. Um, and an unofficial DMO board meeting was held this past Thursday, and we've been able to get some stakeholders to the table. There's still lots of work to be done there. We have another meeting coming. But the, the biggest thing is we've started. So this is a huge win. And our project director, Erin, she's going to continue her work with the local operators as well. Um, and I'm gonna hand the presentation over to Erin at this point, and she's gonna talk a little bit more about the organizational structure.
Yeah, hi everyone. Thanks for having me. Um, so in terms of our organizational structure, um, we're looking, basically everything that Transitional Solutions has done in their report, you will see transition into this presentation from here on out, um, along with some other best practices from regional DMOS, local DMOS. Um, so basically what we're looking at doing is developing a non-profit supply that would be the governing organization of our DMO, which will be run by a board. The board will have control over the DMF, so the Destination Marketing Funds, which is the two percent that will be paid by stakeholders. So that'll be a mix of hoteliers and hopefully some tourism operators as we get further into this. Those funds will be controlled through a trustee, a third party, um, that will take all of that money on a monthly basis and then lump sum it to the DMO. And in this instance, when I talk about the DMO, I'm talking about the administration, so that tourism into this will probably end up being. So that is the teams, the DMO administration, that is the professional team, which will hopefully be paid positions that will run the marketing and take advice from both advisory committees and the DMO board. So they will be overseen by the board in terms of, you know, DMO administration will create a budget, the board will approve it. That's the structure there. Um. A little bit more information about the DMO board on the screen right now. The big thing I'll point out here is that we have uh, three hoteliers and two operators in terms of the composition of the board. This is to ensure that the board is guided primarily by those operators who are paying into the year. So there's really a lot of, um, control there. Um, from a DMF perspective, you can read a little bit further about this, but really it's just that two percent from stakeholders who are trustee. And then the DMO administration, or Tourism Hinton as a working name, um, that's kind of initially my position. But where we see this evolving is to, you will end up with paid positions of an executive director, a small marketing team. Um, the DMO, as I said, they're going to develop all of the plans, strategic direction. But then the board and advisory committees will have oversight and approval of those things. And then the advisory committees. So the advisory committees, we're proposing two of them. Um, one for marketing and events and the other for product development. Both committees will be comprised of stakeholders with interest and knowledge in the project matter, and they'll have to have a minimum of one board member on each of the committees. And the idea there is that there is connection between boards, the administration, the Tourism Hinton, and the advisory committees at every level, so that everybody, the boots on the ground, getting the information to those that are doing the work, and it is guided and approved by the board as well. So there's consistency between all three. And then lastly, we've got the timeline, and um, I'm not gonna lie, it might be a little bit optimistic. But uh, the DMO board creation within four weeks, I am very hopeful of that one. We've had a good initial meeting. We've got another meeting coming up on July twelfth. Uh, anyway, the TMS, um, is, uh, might be a little bit later. So I, I've been talking to a few of the hoteliers recently. I suspect we might be pushing to start that in the fall. Um, but then when we look at the advisory committees, the marketing and events advisory committee, I think we'll get out of the ground as, as per the timeline presented, so about four weeks after the board. And then, um, we've got brand, we're, we're working with some third-party contractors on the brand. And once we have the board in place, all of their work will flow quite quickly. So I think that one's really good. And then the last element of all of that was, if I remember correctly, uh, the marketing plan. Yes, marketing plan. Um, and uh, what we've got from Transitional Solutions is a twenty-four month marketing plan at this point in time. Um, and once we have the board in place, we'll work on that marketing plan to ensure that it is the best plan for Hinton. But it's a really good starting point, and I'm, I'm really excited for what that's, what that's gonna bring.
Cool. So, on that note, I'm sure that we have a lot of questions, and Erin and I think we have to do our best to answer these.
Thank you, Councilor Taylor.
Bye.
Hi.
Um, one of the reasons is collaborate with local officials to draft and implement a necessary legislation or bylaws to enable the collection of the DMF.
Sorry, this is from the timeline or?
Yeah, month three roughly.
Month three, uh, sorry.
Collaborate with local officials to draft and implement the necessary legislation bylaws to enable the collection of the DMF.
Enable the collection of the DMF.
Does that mean that it's gonna be a mandatory tax? The hotels pay, or is it gonna be a law? Why would we have to vote for legislation if it's not a mandatory tax? There's two ways to do it. There's voluntary collection, unless the, the bills, and there's mandatory, where you got to pay, you know, different communities do different things.
Yeah, that does it that way, but this would be completely voluntary.
Also, it's just the wording.
Bylaws, I'm, I'm probably referring to the society bylaws and non-profit, private bylaws.
Okay. Okay, no, that's fine. I was looking, I got confused with the word local authorities. Okay, so it's like a voluntary, uh, uh, stuff like fee, a voluntary fee. Okay, very nice.
Yeah.
Just question.
Counsel?
Oh, is it on there? Oh, okay. Sorry, I was trying to find where you were looking. Sorry, sorry.
Counselor Taylor?
How, how are we gonna, how are we gonna measure the effectiveness of this? Um, you know, like I can see the vacancy rates by different quarters and the off-seasons and all that. So how, how do we know, how are you, are you gonna know that this is gonna be successful? Like, what are the objectives, the targets for, for success? You know, is it increasing the vacancy rates in this quarter, X percent higher than, well, just wondering how it's gonna work.
You want to start? Yes. Sure, I, I'm, so in the work that Transitional Solutions has done, and I think we'll be to the business, there is some PPIs already outlined. Um, and we have been following some of those baseline, um, numbers right now, so we have a starting point. So we, we can look at, you know, explore Hinton's performance in terms of the website, so we can look at our social media performance so far. Uh, we've been collating information about our occupancy levels for the hotels and their current ADRs. Um, so the intention will be to track all of those things over time and certainly, um, make sure that we're improving that. But in terms of just an overall statement of what is the, you know, what is the DMO trying to do? It's to grow that occupancy and increase ADR, the, the average selling rate. Um, so we, we would have to track that very, very closely to ensure that we're successful in that.
Yeah, and if I could just add, there has been extensive surveys that have been done by the hoteliers where we've measured the occupancy rates based on a percentage. So in that first quarter, how full are you typically? Um, yeah, second quarter, those, those percentages, and that will be our baseline to start with, so that we can actually see if, if, if during the shoulder season, your, your occupancy rate was at forty percent, and we, we can increase that percentage, then that will give us something to go on as we know what the starting point was for those occupancies in those seasons, and then we'll be able to do those comparisons.
Good.
Thank you very much, Counselor Taylor. Counselor Haas?
Thank you, Mister Chair. I'm wondering where Airbnb's, all of this, is that some other, you're talking about the hoteliers, but maybe we have a number of their V B's. Is that another target for, uh, to, to access some funds to look at if they're ready to go into volunteer duty?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it, it, it's gonna have to be a buy-in from, from several different stakeholders. Um, you know, there's, there's different models. Um, lots of times you'll have a free that's collected that goes into your DMF, but there's also, um, you know, other ways of, of raising money into the, the DMO. Um, we have to still figure out all of the systems as to, you know, the baseline, where they're going to start at right now. We've been able to get hoteliers to agree to that two percent as, as a starting line. I mean, it, it has to be where the, the stakeholders that are paying into it need to see the direct benefits of that coming in, and, and I think that this will be a case of built-in label come. Um, you know, as, as the visitor economy starts to grow for Hinton, I think a lot of our tourism operators will see the benefit in supporting this, whether it be through paying into that two percent fee or if it's through memberships or, uh, different grant opportunities that kind of, I mean, there, there's lots of, um, grants right now with Travel Alberta for product development, and these are sorts of things that we can help support those tourism organizations through them being part of the DMO. So.
Thank you. Counselor Taylor?
Those the events-based marketing gonna actually work? Like, how are we gonna get these events that we used to have, or didn't, don't have anymore with this COVID? Are we gonna go out and get those events, bring them to here to, uh, increase our audit conceiv- if some of them don't actually work?
Yeah. Um. It's quite a tactical question at this point in time of the development of the DMO.
It's general.
But yeah, in general terms, um, the role of the DMO, and that is to help facilitate and bring those sorts of events back, but also look for new opportunities. And so that might be, you know, looking at meet periods in the year and going, it would be really amazing if we could have a big event in February. Um, what's out there? What are our changes? Could we be doing copy or curling or, you know, other sorts of things? Um, but, uh, yeah, as the team develops, you will have someone, you know, in a product development role or an events role that would be actively going and pursuing those things.
Counsel? Well, thank you so much for coming on and presenting to us today. We, we appreciate it. We appreciate your time.
Happy to, thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, so that brings us to our reports from administration, section five point one, uh, the rescind town employees on volunteer fire department policy, uh, zero six seven, and I will turn it over to administration.
Thank you, Chair. I will refer this one to, uh, Matthew Morgan. We see, uh, the important thing tonight is, uh, information item to rescind in town, uh, into its town employees on volunteer fire department policy, number zero six seven. Uh, the recommendation is to receive this report, uh, and direct administration to bring this report to the municipal council meetings. Uh, the current policy zero six seven was written in nineteen ninety, thirty-three years ago. Is quite dated and does not address the immigration volunteer firefighters, if not otherwise employed by the town and Hinton. This stat does not address the current needs of our rescue services and how we compensate the members today. Administration has developed a pay directive, uh, P S D two-three zero five point one, at which outlines in detail how volunteer firefighters are compensated with pay and limited benefits. This pay directive, which is intended to replace policy, policies zero six seven, aligns with our practices with correct use for town employees and the processes that reflect what fire rescue action follow for compensation of our firefighters. The action is to commit and set this report for information and refer administration to bring the report to future council meeting. That, if you have questions.
Yes. Great, favorite, Counselor Taylor?
Uh, after watching somebody, uh, vividly extracted from a head-on collision by volunteer fire, fire department vendors, I appreciate how important they are. Uh, my question is, are the rates of this comparable to surrounding towns of similar size from installed?
Yes, we did, uh, through the chairs, all committee. Um, we did a survey, which, uh, regularly compared with committees that we use for town Hinton for other places. And also, uh, comparable towns of our size to Alberta. And, uh, we found that we are actually in the between sixteen to sixty-five percent out of pay in comparison to the communities.
Uh, thank you very much, Counselor Taylor. I have myself the Counselor Levar from the mayor. Uh. Chief, I, I noticed, uh, in the old policy, uh, zero six seven, the, pardon me. Uh, the rates of pay are not included in that document. Are they part of a separate document or are they just not included in, like, you know, how was it captured in the whole? The new way is very clear. I was just trying to get a feel for, uh.
If you're the chair, that's a very good question. Back in nineteen ninety, it was a true volunteer fire department. Uh, and it did not reflect any pay. And then shortly after that, they would actually pay them on the way, which was what always did in the sense, the town employees would be able to pay. Um, they would, we can replace it.
But that makes a lot of sense. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Levar?
Um, just so I understand, so under, under eight oh in that, in that document, there's lots of benefit in title. Those things like employee family assistance plan, all their fire, fire insurance. Those, to be just, to be clear, those are, that are found again in place, like other law, where firefighters do not have that. Actually, is that correct?
Yeah, through the chair, um, that's not fair. All, all firefighters are covered with the ten assistance program. We budgeted for that in the two thousand and twenty-three budget, and we'll account for that in future budgets as well.
Okay, great, thanks. Thank you, Counselor Levar. Uh, Mister Mayor, uh, thank you, Mister Chair. Um, thanks for, uh, this report, uh, Fire Chief. I guess my question is back to compensation. But what are the budget impacts? Uh, once this is implemented. So let's say on, on a given year, twenty twenty-two, what we're currently, if all things being equal, implementing this is, what would be the budget increase needed to cover these changes?
Uh, through the chair, if I could ask a clarifying question?
Yeah, are you in, in twenty twenty-three or in future? So just, uh, if I may, Mister Chair, yeah, please, based on what we previously were doing, because you said that this is a combination of what we're currently doing in practice and what is recommended based on, on other practices, right? So there's a combination. So without knowing all the variables that have changed or, or, or combined, all, all things being equal in year X, we were, you know, running at a hundred percent budget. Is this an increase or decrease of whatever percent by implementing this?
Uh, thank you for that. Uh, through the chair, now this is actually status quo. Uh, we've only accounted for this of being given in the year three, twenty twenty-three budget. Uh, so I anticipate that we will give a budget for, or unless we, one, a lot of calls. Uh, but, uh, we've already come to that. Yeah, so there should be, it's made a certain impact.
And, uh, I have one more. Yeah, go ahead. And then my other question is, uh, how, uh, seeing that we're reviewing this, this is what we may implement, how is this being reserved by the fire?
Uh, through the chair, uh, to all the committee, uh, it's actually been received quite well, uh, because they're being compensated, recognized for all the time that they put in, uh, the training hours that they put in, uh, so that they can do the technical skills that are required as firefighting. Uh, they're being fairly compensated for all their activities. So it's being received very well.
Okay, thank you, Mister Chair. Thank you, Mister Mayor. I have myself and next, a, a small detail item. And really, it's a question because it's just different from the way, uh, you know, the employers that I've worked for, for have done things. Seven point three, pay will be deducted for the hidden fire rescue social club. Uh, it's on page three of the, uh, PSD policy. Really silly question because I've never encountered a mandatory social, uh, pay-in by policy before. Is that, like, is that allowed? I, I'm sorry for not being gentle with questions. I've never encountered it. Uh, through the chair, uh.
Yes, it, it is a mandatory deduction.
Okay.
But they can opt out of, uh, of any association deductions, uh, for valid reasons for cultural, religious, whatever, because it's a, not.
Okay. That's some labor sentence. Perfect. Thank you, thank you. Uh, council, any other questions? Uh, Counselor Taylor?
The country of the night, boy. Record, we're supposed to do with required vaccinations and direct by the hidden fire rescue will be covered by the time on submission. But we have still insisting on mandatory vaccinations. Is that, is that, there is supposed to be there. Uh, through the chair, that's supposed to be there. Uh, it's mandatory vaccinations for things like hepatitis, uh, and measles, monster.
Oh, I see, so not just COVID-related, not just, if they choose to get the COVID vaccinations, uh, they're free.
We don't have a mandatory COVID pulse.
No, we don't.
But there are mandatory because of, you know, blood runs, so that, you know, things.
Counsel, uh, any other question? Mister Mayor?
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. I'll do the recommended action that committee has set this report of the town employees on volunteer fire department policy zero six seven. This information can refer administration to the public report in future regular council meeting. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you very much, Mister Mayor. Uh, council, I think we should generally see it on our screen right now. Do we have any last-minute uh, questions or debate on the proposed motion? Seeing none, I will call it a question. That committee accept this report of the town employees on volunteer fire department policy zero six seven as information and refer administration to bring this report to a future regular council meeting. If you can vote electronically now. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much, council. Uh, council, do we have any further questions or directions on this particular report? Seeing none, we will move on to five two, the non-residential tax incentive bylaw number eleven sixty-one dash one. Administration with the biannual update, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'll refer this one to Mr. Vogel.
Good afternoon, committee. Uh, before you is the information item as required in the tactical plan. That, um, administration comes forward with the update for you twice per year on the tax incentive bylaw. Um, as noted in the report, we have had two applicants who will be considered successful applicants since twenty twenty-one. Uh, we have only paid out on the one application because the second application, we're still two outstanding items under, uh, section four, the criteria for exemption. But we're doing regular follow-up, uh, internally, and as soon as we're able to have those two items cleared, then, uh, that reappearals to be able to be in receipt of the, yeah, tax incentive by law really.
Thank you. Uh, council, questions? Seeing, no, Counselor Taylor?
I mean, that's good. We've got some uptake, but the uptake doesn't seem that, uh, stellar. That's because we just haven't had a lot of approach with product and contracts.
Two, two, um, committee, that is correct, that we have the missions received.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Counsel, any other questions or? Counselor Haas?
Yeah, I'll move to committee accept the non-residential taxes and by law limits as one dash six report.
Yeah, thank you very much, council. Any questions or debate on? Yeah, thank you very much. Council, any questions or debate on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, then I will call it to question that committee accept the non-residential tax incentive bylaw number eleven sixty-one dash one report. For information, Councilor Taylor, is that a hand? Okay, just no, no, I wanted to make sure I got you. Sorry, uh, so Council, if you will vote electronically now. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you, Council. Administration, thank you very much. That brings us to uh reporting, Council reports, uh, and we'll start uh with Councilor Levaris.
Um, well, I guess I, uh, Council report, sorry. Yeah, it was in a, yeah, in spot. Yeah, absolutely. Um, well, the one thing I do have to report, I guess today, um, I was able to defend uh credit college school. And um, thanks to uh to the principal at that point for uh suggesting a number of his students for the first Tracy Shepherd community to support today. So uh, her name was Madison Kept. What? Cat fit?
Yeah.
Uh, and she was a um, a long-time volunteer at the food bank and has actually gone on her own to raise money for food banks. So she was the ultimate winner of the day. Uh, she got two hundred fifty cash and. Two hundred fifty will go to the uh, to the charity of her choice. And that's from the hit no reason, actually. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Councilor Hoss.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, had board meeting uh at the library last night. Um, had a lot of good discussion around the table based on uh feedback we had between the council and and library forward. So appreciate all that. Um, and looking uh at uh, you know, moving on some matters, probably hopefully uh before the end of August, something like that. So we're gonna, I think, have a special meeting about this. Obviously, we're uh shut down for July, while this is something to be proactive with that. And uh, just want to remind everybody that tomorrow at one o'clock at the museum, uh, the youth advisory council will be um. Unveiling uh their art projects for the year. They're gonna be putting up some murals. Uh, they'll be up tomorrow, but uh be covered up and then unveiled on Thursday. That was uh. Uh, new new look to that rail car that's up there. So they just apply a little bit of recent work on that. So, yeah, that's all. That's your report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing for me, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, Mr. Uh, pardon me, Councilor Taylor.
Nothing for you.
Thank you. Uh, I'm Councilor O'Satch.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, you want to think? Last Thursday, Community Futures, last year, went and had their annual general meeting. Uh, nothing really of interest, Council, really, other than uh. Nothing, actually. There's a lot of host meeting, uh, election of the board moving forward, steer to come some back. And we are meeting there all of September, I believe. So, that's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, and then for anybody watching, just a reminder uh that we have our Canada Day festivities coming up very quickly. Uh, the parade, which I've been informed will be starting at the community center. I, and then it will proceed along Switzer Drive and end up uh over at Gordon Moore Park. Where we'll be doing cake cutting and uh land acknowledgement and all that kind of great stuff. Uh, and it will be my pleasure to step in for the mayor while he's off on a family road trip. So. Fairly well, drive safe, have a lot of fun, and you know, we'll, we'll miss you. Councilor Taylor?
It's a full of that.
Sure.
Um. I don't like town events uh get like advertised like I'm, I'm thinking of the uh Canada Day celebration of recent, thinking of that is because. It's located at a different uh, it's located at a different location than it has been in the past. So, you know, items that I'm used to, because I'm on marketing for the uh, you know, we already thought about cover vests, we take posters around every business, hundred posters. We do advertising three months and a half to save the date and then uh share the uh information of all the uh boards, uh, Facebook boards and social media sites around town. So, because I mean, here in some comments about this isn't uh as well advertised, people are even unsure about what's going on for Canada Day. So it's kind of like. It's kind of like uh. Maybe a query that could do better, or we could be doing a little bit more to get more people on Canada Day. Uh. If any member of administration knows exactly how, but uh I I'm not sure. The particulars of how we advertise this uh particular event, um, but I would imagine through all of our available channels that we. That we online, social media, uh, websites, um. Anything else that may be available to us? I know we 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 use the sound force, but Mr. Ball, I'd be there about.
Uh, committee, there is a advertisement pointing to be in the voice there. Call page pullout stuff, as well as there have been a number of uh posters and and different electronic, that's what you said.
Well, I'm just wondering, does it get the, does it get shared on uh like the local one, I piece up some, like, get around the question does, because I haven't, I haven't seen it on like in info written online. It was really the biggest site for him. Uh, through the chair, we're we're not sure if this posted through particular social media pages, but we can uh, we can take that as uh. A tip from the public to uh to take a look at how we're doing, making sure that uh one before. No, that's great, no problem.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Uh, and that concludes uh my reporting. So we will go over to C A O.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I don't have anything to report specifically, but we do have the action pending list. Um, as you can see, it is uh almost down to one page, not quite. Um, I were waiting a month uh. Clarity that I hope to see tonight, then we will be bringing this forward, bring um. Uh, as a report to council. Uh, depending, uh, you'll also see that the action completing list is quite lengthy. Uh. This is a lot of the follow-up items. I also mentioned that some items you'll see are actually uh committee consensus items that are included that aren't necessarily. Follow-up action list for our consensus that are made in a whole for clarity through administration. So we just wanted to put them there because they're not lost. But they're not necessarily formal uh direction through administration, blah, blah, blah.
Council, any questions? Uh, Councilor Taylor?
Um. My question's related to uh, it's appropriate to ask it, but. The uh, crossing the the railway crossing Brandon, I still getting comments about how uh. Won't be uh that instant cross, you know, the town should be doing more to fix it. What's this? What sort of stats on that exactly? Like, what's the, what do I tell these people about what the, what we're doing there? Sort of through the chair, I think, crossing uh railway crossing on Brandon.
Drin, Drin.
Oh, Drin, sorry. Um, we have to slow down like one kilometer. Um, yeah, it's between the rails are so big. So I've heard from a number of people that uh this is uh upsetting.
Actually, what's better, you, you have. Uh, C A O. Uh, through the chair, I can actually say that I I've received uh public comments on that as well. Uh, I've been trying to track down through C A, there are, there is somebody who works for C A who does the railway inspections. Uh, I have been attempting to track down to no success that individual to see if there is something, because I do agree it is uh. It's a major artery that goes down into the valley and it is playing probably. So it is something that's on my radar, I've followed it up with, but no uh. Nothing to report on that.
What do I tell the, the person that promised upon tomorrow, give them a report and show the statement? The town manager's falling out, and it will have uh more details the next meeting.
Uh, through the chair, I can't promise next meeting, but we are following up with that one.
They recognize that as a problem, definitely working. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Hoss?
This is another example of where we should be, I think, the getting those going in listens to do that. Uh, because the more people that put it into hidden lessons, the more results you get from it. So I think this is just another example, as a council said, of us having to report back to them. But it goes to that, to that program, just for thought. So, thank you.
Council, anything else on the C A O's uh action pending and complete list? Seeing none, then we are, Councilor Taylor?
I'm sorry, um, just uh, I noticed this today and I'm curious. Uh, what was the arrangement for the sweeping now? We're getting paid for that. We're doing highway sweeping now, so we're getting the machine proceeding, rule of the.
Uh, through the chairs and members of council, uh, yes, so we we came to the conclusion that we we take a different interpretation of our existing contract with over transportation. That means that it is over to transportation's responsibility to do the main, the street sweepings specifically along Highway sixteen. Um, we met with, we met for who is the operator and who actually does all the sweeping. Uh, we determined that they were not prepared and they were not ready, especially due to the fires. They were so far behind. So we agreed that we would uh go ahead and we would continue to do that as a town this year. I do intend that this looks gonna come back in council and a future date to decide which one we believe is better. Uh, is it the dusty significant resources go in and sweep that uh, that main highway? But the the agreement is is that um, uh, we would do it and we would be compensated. We're still working with like for an Alberta transportation on exactly what that compensation is going to look like. But we uh, uh, continuing to work with them as those construction zones moving, we're gonna piecemeal it for uh, for the better part of the summer. But.
And it's a chaos.
Yeah.
Council, oh, uh, Councilor O'Satch.
Goodness, for sure. I have a question, it's kind of a follow-up question that I know it's not a telling objective, so. Over to transportation project, but I'm just wondering about the standard of finish, it's going to be the street light, the social object. Bringing up pretty rough and simple, not the standard it was previous to that project, so again.
Uh, through the chair, uh, I can't speak to that.
Um, through the chair, I can't speak directly to this project because they didn't share anything with me. But speaking from my past history with transportation and those types of projects, generally the cleanup is at the end. Um. So I would be hoping that they would. A lot of attention to that. I can mention it to the project manager. This, we, it's a shared project manager with that project and our Greg Avenue project. So I can certainly mention the the concern and the the notice to.
I can follow up, please. Yeah, and it's simply just because there are some sections where it does look like it's finished. There's an old uh, like false dream moon. Um, and it looks like it's done in that section, but it's not. In my standard, um, but uh, yeah, we look forward to seeing one. So hopefully it is a standard, at least equivalent, if I can fly through this construction.
Yeah, through through to the chair, they they often bring in a spec specific contractor at the end, like a landscaper, that kind of stuff that comes through. Does that all at once to finish your scene? There's probably, you know, just the contractors doing the lighting themselves and then they're bringing the seaters and the. And the landscape people through here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Taylor.
Yeah, I kind of a follow-up on the streetlight. Um, some people I talk to, they'll sleep well, so they go for a morning right around. You noticed that the streetlights weren't uh, weren't working. So, um, that's, that's just a comment that they may.
Yeah, well, you know, Chair, I'll have to fire about that as well. It could be related to the construction, but they just don't know.
And other solutions, you know, in our comment, but we're going to be working.
Council, anything further? Seeing none, we do have two closed session items, uh, seven one and seven two. Council looking for a motion to move into closed session. Councilor Hoss?
I'm going to go with the closed session.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. We'll wait for that to appear electronically. Council, any discussion on that? Seeing none, I'll call it a question that committee move into closed session at four forty-four P M. Uh, please vote electronically now. And that is carried unanimously. Uh, we will move into a closed session. Give everybody a couple minutes here to transition. And uh, we'll get started at four forty-eight.